Well, good evening, everyone. We appreciate you being with us for our work session for February. At the beginning of our meetings, we like to start with a moment of silence and then we'll invite you to join us. We ask that you tonight remember Mr. Lee is not here. His dad passed away very early this morning, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers too. And if you'll join us for a moment of silence. We'll have Ms. Henderson or you go introduce this pretty young lady and she's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and be sure she's standing there so she can be seen on camera.
This is my friend from Ravanell Elementary School. And I'm the principal there. My name is Angie Henderson and this is Ally Foster. And she is our school president. She was voted on by her peers. She's a fifth grader. And Ally is a...
A fifth grader.
She is a ball of energy. I love her death. She wants to be first female president of the United States. And I feel like that could be possible with her leadership skills. So she is going to keep winning the pledge, which is at this time. So stand.
Stand. Salute pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Ally. Appreciate you being with us. Ms. Henderson or you or Mr. Luss?
She's up.
All right, you're up. Well, I, yeah, let me get the agenda approved. I'm sorry, did it?
No, it's kind of...
No, no, you're right. I'm right. I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm ready. Yeah, um, yeah, she went mine out. You know what that is?
We want to do the agenda first.
Okay.
Put my glasses on.
Hey, Jay.
Hey, Jay.
They sat up.
We're struggling.
You don't make it first. Okay, yeah. All right, well, good evening. Glad you are all here and out of home with the flu or something crazy like that. A lot of sickness has been going around and it's hit my family for sure. We've had the flu and strep in my household, but we're all well now, so that's good. I am going to highlight a little bit about Ravanell Elementary tonight. We try to pick a new theme every year and our theme this year is Destination, Education, Explore, Dream, Discover. And this is kind of our logo that we have branded our school year with. We started off, over the summer, we actually had our own summer institute at Ravanell that revolved around STEAM and STING concepts. And we, what we did is we bridged literacy with STEAM so that we could fully integrate what we were doing with those STEAM concepts in our ELA classes. So I'm just going to start off by showing you a few pictures. Obviously with the Olympics here, it's been perfect with our theme, looking at different countries around the world. And we have even tied in our 100 foot challenge with reading around the world. So when they get 100 steps, they're in a different continent for 200 and 300 and so forth. So you can tell South America, or rather, North America, actually both of them recovered, are 100 and 200 steps with that map. So that's been really cool. This is just our entryway this year. RES students make the world a better place. And so we try to just focus on that, using your strengths, your gifts, your abilities, and where you come from and how you can impact not only Ravanell, but Oconee County and then the world as a whole. So I wanted to start off by highlighting some of our students that are actually from other countries that are now currently at Ravanell. And some of them just came to Ravanell this year and they have jumped right in there. They're learning English. And this is one of our friends, Yadio. Listen to him.
I'm Italian. She loves Ravanell.
So he said he was from Puerto Rico and he loved Ravanell. It was funny when we were showing some of these videos or we were filming some of them that the students were having trouble even going back and remembering their foreign language because they've learned English so well. So that was, that's been kind of neat to see.
We met at that age. We know it's Christopher. He's on Avenue.
He also said he loved Ravanell. He is from Mexico. His name is Christopher. And this is Raul. He is also from Mexico.
I love the school.
He said he loved the school. And this is Emmanuel. And Emmanuel is from Ghana, Africa, and he speaks fluent French.
Don't you watch it, Amal, Rico?
Emmanuel's been with us for two years. He came to us knowing zero English and he is pretty much a fluent speaker right now. So they're doing really well. And I just thought that would be neat for you guys to see some students throughout the entire world that are right at Ravanell. So tonight I'm going to focus mainly on our related arts programs and then what we've done with mentorship too at our school. We had a holiday musical. Jessica Thrift put on the second annual holiday musical and she is a nut. This year, she did music around the world appropriately enough. And at our musical that we did with our fourth and fifth graders, when the parents came, she had the parents stand up and sing the 12 Days of Christmas with hand motions and all kinds of fun stuff. I think, were you there that night, Mr. or not?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You divided the room up into different days.
Yes, we did. We divided the room up and every section was a different hand motion and the parents loved it. They got into it. It was great. But she's brave to do things like that and things like this. So she surprised our student body with the teachers singing Carol of the Bells and they did a great job. Listen to them.
(Singing) The turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here. (Singing) Singing all the turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here. (Singing) Singing all the turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here. (Singing) Singing all the turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here. (Singing) Singing all the turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here.
Yeah, that is a hard song to sing if you've ever sang in the choir. But they rehearsed after school. They got into that. They really worked together and it was so funny to see them be so serious. But the students went nuts. They loved that. They loved to see that their teachers were just as interested in music as they were. So that was a really cool performance in this. And then in art, our art teacher, Ms. Garrett, is her first year at Ravanell. She's not a first year teacher, but she is also working on artwork from around the world and she's doing a fabulous job with that. She's going to continue with our Arts on the Green tradition, of course. She actually was a presenter at Artists on the Green back in the day and she attended Ravanell as a student. So it's really cool to see her be full circle and come back and be an art teacher at a place that was, had such an impact on her as a student. Our library this year, we have tried to really mix it up and do something a little bit different. And the librarian, actually Ms. Edgerton, came to me with this cool idea of having a STEAM lab in the library that was manned by her and her assistant. And so we purchased a lot of cool STEAM kits and she's, she calls it getting steamy in the library. And during their, during their instructional time, we have like a targeted instruction. We pull out our students that are high achievers and we pull out those that are low achievers and there's some students that get lost in the shuffle. They get to go get steamy in the library now. So that's been a really cool addition. Of course, I always like to brag about our PE class. I feel like our PE teachers are the best in the district. They have full units on dance and gymnastics and our students just enjoy going into the gym, our new gym, each and every day. And if you look at the gentleman on the left, you know, I, don't do that on your own. Don't do that on your own. I was saying, if I, if I had have done that, I would not be standing tonight. But they're really cool. They actually grade with iPads and what they do in PE is really amazing. And then this is our foreign language. Ms. Emily Dent is still teaching Spanish, so we've kind of partnered that with what we're doing with Rosetta Stone. We selected Spanish as our language of choice for this entire school year for both Rosetta Stone and this foreign language class. And I wanted you to hear a kindergarten class and a fifth grade class sing some of their songs that they have learned in Spanish. The first one is kindergarten.
(Singing) The turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here. (Singing) Singing all the turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here.
It's so precious to see them get excited about learning a foreign language. And then you have to get a little bit cooler with the fifth graders, okay? So here we go. Start learning Spanish.
Here we go. (Singing) The turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here. (Singing) Singing all the turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here. (Singing) Singing all the turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here. (Singing) Singing all the turkey, the turkey, the turkey, we will sing songs of the cheer of Christmas is here.
So it's been really cool to see our students get excited about foreign language and I think you're going to have, yeah, there we go. One last thing that we are very proud of this year is what we are doing with mentors in our community. Started off the school year seeing a need, knowing that a need was there. And I was meeting with six fifth grade girls during lunch every Thursday and they all wanted to talk to me at the same time about really deep issues. And so with Dr. Thorson's help, we got Mentor Oconee on board. And now we have over 13 mentors that come every single week to our school and meet one-on-one with students. And it's a fabulous organization. Also had the awesome opportunity of going to Clemson University. They have a group of athletes from every single sport that meet together and they encourage their own sport to build their volunteer hours. So I met with them, told them that the need that we had with needing mentors, needing more people to pour into our students each and every week. And they lit up and they have jumped in there. We've had close to 70 athletes respond. And I would say on a weekly basis, we probably have 40 that come to our school each and every week and work with students. And that varies from the one-on-one mentoring like I was talking about, but also they're going to PE, they're going to recess, they're doing the tiger reads, going into the classroom and reading. And I think it's been just as beneficial for the athletes as it has been for our students as well. So I'll conclude with this. Fill your life with adventure, not things. Have stories to tell, not stuff to show. Thank you guys for allowing me to present tonight.
Good job.
Thank you.
Ms. Luss.
Should have gone first, shouldn't you? Yeah. I don't have a video. I have a PowerPoint. It should be saved on the desktop. You know, being a Clemson fan, they always talk about Dabo leaving to go to Alabama. I kind of feel, but the question with that is, do you ever want to follow a legend? So I kind of feel like that now. It's sort of, sort of hard, sort of a hard act to follow, but I'll, but I'll do my best and I'll try to be brief. Just want to kind of highlight a little bit what's going on in the Career Center, something we did a little bit differently this year and something that we're super excited about. We had what was called Made in Oconee Day last week. It was actually a day and a half to kind of coincide with what was going on countywide, which was, it was Made in Oconee Week. In conjunction and partnership with, with Oconee Economic Alliance, we, who is trying to bring recognition specifically to the manufacturing fields and to highlight all the things that are made in Oconee, we decided to kind of piggyback on that and then sort of pair our tours that we typically have with the Made in Oconee theme. The first slide you'll see here, the title slide, you see three of our programs highlighted. We'll speak a little bit more to the one on the left, which is going to be Fire and EMS here in a second, but that's a new program that we're adding next year. We'll talk about that a little bit more. In the middle, we have a, what you'll see, so that was people from Scott Cryin and Emergency Services and, and the Fire Chief, Mr. Charlie came out as well. In the middle, you'll see that's an instructor from Tri-County Tech in Health Science speaking to our students in our CNA lab. And then over on the right, you see Jonas Crooks, who's one of our teachers in engineering. I showed this slide a lot last week, prior to these, prior to them coming and visiting us, the freshmen coming in and visiting us, I went out and spoke to the ninth, the 10th graders at all three high schools. And I always show this slide because this is, this is just a snapshot, a, a, a good, a good representation of all our business partners that we have here in Oconee County. This is sort of the key to career and technology education and it's the key to everything we do at the Career Center. So I always show this to students. I show it, it's pretty effective to show to parents. And when I'm recruiting for the Career Center, I remind them that all of our programs are backed by what we call an advisory board, which is made up, made up of these business partners because we want to be on the cutting edge. We want to make sure that our machine tool program is aligned with what Oconee Machine and Tool is doing. We want to make sure that we have the, the newest and latest great technology, that our techniques are the best, and we want to make sure that we're actually doing a great job of providing programs that are in tune with what's going on in the county. So sort of capturing what was going on in, in the county, highlighting what was made in Oconee and then pairing that with our normal freshman tours is what kind of made, what was what Made in Oconee Day was about last week. So what happened was last Tuesday, Wahala's freshman came to visit, last Tuesday morning, last Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon, West Oak came to visit and then Wednesday morning, Seneca came. So we had about a total of 715 freshmen from out, throughout the district who came. What they did was they pre-selected three programs that they thought they might be interested in and they spent about 30 minutes in each one of those programs. And what we did, instead of just doing a tour, like you can see in the bottom right with his arms crossed, that's Jeremy Davis, he's my auto technology teacher, but beside him was a service manager at Lake Kiwi Chrysler Dodge. So what we did is we sort of combined a career day with our tour because we think it's important, you know, students when they come, even though they're cool new classes, something they're not used to, they still see this as, I'm a student and I'm going to take a class. What we did was try to get them to already start thinking, this class is preparing you, it's giving you prerequisite skills, but it's really preparing you for a career and for a future. So what we did is we got our instructors to meet up with their, with their board members, those people you saw in the earlier slide, their advisory board and some other key players in the community. They worked together on what their 30-minute presentation was going to be. So each program got to see nine different groups of students alongside their business partners and they got to kind of highlight that field, that job. And the whole theme was to kind of let them understand, you know, there's a lot of cool stuff made in Oconee, but the best thing that we make in Oconee is our, is our students, is our resources, is our future workforce. So that was kind of our spin on the whole Made in Oconee Day. So you see, that was a sign that was in both entrances when they came in. The business partners are across the bottom. The, the smaller picture beside, beside the words at the top, that's our building construction. That is the, that is a project manager for Jay Davis Construction, who does some work for our district. And that was in our building construction class. So again, they were saying, here's a building construction teacher, come and take this class with us. And this is a guy actually from Jay Davis that says, if you go take this class and you, and you gain these skills and you can be gainfully employed straight out of high school. So it was a really good partnership and a marriage of sort of two ideas, both a career day, alumni forum sort of feel, also with just our typical freshman tours. So again, that's sort of what the idea was. It was program recruitment tied to career awareness. Career, career techn, career awareness is sort of the, the lifeblood of what we do. We work very closely with our local guidance counselors at our high schools and middle schools, do a lot of interest inventories, that kind of stuff, gauge the strengths, weaknesses and needs of the kids, analyze where they are academically, what they like to do, are they, are they good hands-on? And we try to kind of steer those guys in directions for careers that they'll enjoy and that they think they'll be good at. And then program recruitment, because ultimately at my school, I mean, I think every kid in Oconee County should come through my school and those that come and visit usually agree with that. Obviously, when we, when we open up our building, the kids get a lot out of it, but what I hear more and more from teachers is, man, I wish I'd have known that. I wish I would have taken that course. So that's kind of, that was sort of the marriage there. As you see on the left, that's Rodney's class, that's Coach Quick's class, that's culinary arts. I encourage anyone, in fact, Lisa, Steve's wife, asked me one day, what, what does James need to take if he comes down there? I said, he has no idea what he, what he wants to do. Take Rodney's class because you'll learn how to stand in front of people, you'll learn how to communicate well, and you'll just learn how to be a better contributing, better contributing member of society. So a lot of those kids, I have a waiting list a mile long. I wish I had three Rodneys there because everybody loves that. Everybody that goes in that class doesn't want to come out and be a chef, but everyone that comes out of that class could, could go that direction, but they're much more confident, those soft skills that we hear from everybody that is important to get employed are always, are always stressed in there. The one in the middle, you see, that's actually Erin Druney, one of my instructors' mothers. She works for DSS and that's my early childhood education class. We've sort of, we got a new instructor this year, Michelle Worson-Croft, who's a longtime teacher in the district, was at Kiwi. She's doing a phenomenal job. Those students spend a semester in there, learning about early childhood, child development, that kind of stuff. And then they spend an entire semester out in internship. So anybody interested in being a teacher, owning a daycare, working at DSS, obviously, or like I say, just being a better mom or dad, it's a really, really good program. And on the right is our graphic communication class, that's Mr. Alan Vargo. The gentleman beside him works for TNR Graphics, which is a really cool place down kind of across from the bowling alley beside Deaners. TNR Graphics is your typical graphics place. They do paper print, they do T-shirts, they do stickers, they do logos. He's actually advertising vehicle wraps. If you've seen all the awesome new Greenville Hospital ambulances and all those kind of things, TNR is actually, they, they do that. That's a, that's what they do in our graphics class. Now we're learning how to do that. We've bought a machine, a smaller scale machine. There's a cool Mac Lab of computers that go through the Adobe suites. They learn how to design. So the really artsy-minded kids enjoy it in there, but then they work with the functional production side and he was there talking about those opportunities. TNR really stepped up the plate last year and at our awards night, one of the students that, who was doing a paid internship, a co-op, they gave him a job right there on the spot. So they got up there, we had a ceremony, kind of like a set, a signing ceremony you do for someone signing to play baseball somewhere. We did that at our awards day and TNR has been a great business partner. So that was kind of what it was. It was sort of a mashup when it comes to program recruitment and we sort of tried to tie it to a career awareness. Again, here's some other programs that we highlighted. These pictures were actually taken by the Economic Alliance, who does a great job of partnering with us and trying to get, to get the word out. Welding, of course, there's the huge, is the big picture on the right. Of course, welding is a big part of the manufacturing push here and, and that program is again, with Scott Hightower, is always highlighted. A lot of the kids go in there, they see the sparks flying and then they have a guy, we had two guys from Duke Power and then one guy from Lift Tech talking about all those jobs. And again, some of these are jobs you can get, just come straight right out of high school. Very exciting. I can't even see it there, far left. I think that's graphics again with Mr. Vargo. Again, that's the guy from TNR talking. And the bottom left is cosmetology again. That's one of the messages we send. We're still the vocational school in a lot of respects. We have a lot of those traditional programs and cosmetology is another one of those with a long line. It was a great day. Dr. Thorson was there. He left asking what classes his, his children can take next year. And I think it was, I'm sure our attendance is going to be up because I think that ninth grade is just that, that's that prime time, eighth and ninth grade, to get them to really start thinking about future, not pigeonholing the kids, but getting them to think about what it's going to be when they get out of school. So basically what's going on in the Career Center this year, we're just trying to stay on message at Career Center right now. We're trying to send that message that K classes are for anyone, for everyone. With a new semester block schedule, there's a lot of flexibility built into the student's schedule. If they're, if they're proactive and planning, then they can find a time to come down. It doesn't matter if they're involved in sports or they're involved in AP courses or in fine arts, we can find time for you to come down there. That's the message we're trying to send. Redefine success. We talked about this a little bit last year. It's core to my message and it's core to what we're sending out to the parents as well as that success is not necessarily graduate from high school and going on to a four-year college. Awesome, that, that is a definition of success. But if we can get kids out there who are employable, they've got, they've got prerequisite, soft skills and technical skills and they can get employed, they can be gainfully employed and be a good, a good mom, dad, community member, that's a win. And we've got to do a better job of celebrating that. All you teachers know that we've got those kids that make, they're not, we know they're, they're probably not going to go to a four-year school, but they can do anything with their hands and are going to make a lot more money than we do in our profession. Those are successful kids and we got to do a lot better jobs of defining that. Soft skills and technical skills, everywhere I go, I preach that. I preach that to our EMS teachers, to our math teachers at our homeschools. Work that into your curriculum and that's something that we, we keep saying. We want our kids to have more opportunities to communicate and we also, those technical skills. Again, you're going to a four-year school, it's still good to learn how to wire a house. It's still good, it's still good to learn how to lay brick and that kind of, so there's stuff that we're just, that, the age group of people who know how to do that, it's, it's fading away. They're retiring. The workforce is desperate. If, if your toilet was to flood tonight and you were in trouble, you would learn that quickly. All right, first off, your wife would probably be angry because you didn't know how to fix it yourself, but then when you got on the phone and you started calling around, the law and supply demand would be very evident when you saw how much it costs for those guys to come out to your house. And that's what I preach to those kids. Let's teach them those skills. Work ethic, work ethic, work, work, work ethic, ah, can't speak, work ethic. That's what we preach at every single one of our courses, whether it's computer programming or whether it's machine tool technology. And workforce development, the NOW program that we instituted last year has been a success. About half those 30 students found some sort of paid summer internship and we're working on identifying the next group of the, of the nurtured Oconee workforce class. New courses next year, this is my last slide. We're really excited about our new offerings. We're offering all the programs we have. The only real change within ones we have had, our Mechatronics program, which is kind of your industrial maintenance, your industrial electronics program, that's going to be a completely dual credit program next year at Tri-County. So they'll be meeting, meeting at the new campus down, down on Highway 11, but we will still be offering that for the kids. The kids will graduate high school with 44 hours at Tri-County Tech if they enroll with that program. Forty-four hours, absolutely free, no fees whatsoever. So I've got a student, he's, he's in the top 20, he's a sophomore right now, he's in the top 20 at Wahala. He's signing up for that class. He knows he's going four-year college, but why not get 44 hours at credit before you go become a mechanical engineer? Exciting program. We're excited about the partnership with tech there. And then at our school next year, we're actually going to be housing an AP Computer Science class for those that are really concerned about their grade point average. It'll be AP Computer Science, it's a good intro. We already have programming courses, video game design, but the AP class is something new, firefighting and EMS. There's a huge demand locally for that. You can take both those programs, your junior and senior year. When you come out, you'll have, you'll be one small practicum type shadowing right along, time away from having your, your EMT and you'll have your firefighter two license. You talk about marketable and that's going to be something, I, I know I'm going to have a waiting list for that. We're excited about that program and adding to our Project Lead the Way program, we're adding aerospace engineering with Boeing coming and then a lot of the companies that, that supply Boeing been in the area, there's actually a big need for aerospace engineers around here. And this is going to be a class a lot of kids find attractive because everyone loves airplanes and that kind of stuff. I just want to say, I'm very, very, very thankful for the support you guys have given Career and Technology, the help to Career Center. I think we're the best place we've been in a long time. I just, I just ask for that continued support and I'll, I'll do my best to keep, trying to preach the gospel of K. But thank you for the time and again, thank you for the opportunity to kind of highlight some of the great things going on in Career Center. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Luss. Good job. Okay, now we will get a motion approved, tonight's agenda for the February 12 work session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for the February 12, 2018 work session agenda.
Motion, I have a second.
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 some of the great things going on at Career Center. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Okay, now we will get a motion approved tonight's agenda for the February 12 work session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for the February 12, 2018 work session agenda.
Motion, second. Second. Any comments, questions, putting them all in favor? It's unanimous. Next, we have public comment section. Did anyone sign up? No one signed up, all right. Dr. Thorson will be next in division reports.
And I do want to mention one thing before I get started with the agenda here. West Oak High School was down at the state wrestling championships at Airport High School in Columbia on Saturday, and it wasn't even close. Won their back-to-back state championship, third out of the last four years, so we're real proud of them. It was a great afternoon down there. And the exhibit that I have, the topic I have is inclement weather forgiveness. So as you know, we missed two days this year due to hurricanes, which is very unusual for O'Conne County. And then we've had three days missed to frozen precipitation. So we're at five now. State law calls for three makeup days to be included in the calendar, which we did, and we're attending school on all three of those days. But those next three can be forgiven by local school boards. I've been noticing in the papers that several of the local school boards around us have already done this, but we would like to recommend that our fourth and fifth missed days be forgiven, which would mean that there would only be 178 school attendance days this year. Now, Mr. Hamby was explaining to me that as far as our computer system goes, they'll officially be called something else.
Have they board-approved days so that they'll stay in there, so the nine weeks won't get thrown off until the state will know? We had 180 full days in our count.
But for students and teachers, it will mean two fewer days is the short of it. But that's not, for decision tonight, that's something you can ponder on, and we'll have it on the agenda next week for a vote.
If you have any questions about that or suggestions.
We have some teachers that might want to weigh in.
What do y'all think?
We've heard about it already.
I saw where one district was going an hour a day extra until they made it all up.
Boy, what a waste of time.
Yeah. You don't accomplish anything.
But that's all I have.
Okay, good, thanks, Dr. Thorson. And Ms. Hamby, operational services.
You have the January financial report. You had that available for you to peruse and see if you've come up with any questions for Ms. Moore. You can play stump the executive director of finance if you have any questions. She'll be happy to answer those.
There's a new dishwasher we purchased for us. Twenty-five thousand dollars or something.
We did.
I'm glad I don't have to have that in my house.
It was at James and Brown. You're going to see.
What all does it do?
Explain. Well, they've got to be so big, they've got to be so big, and then they've got to move the pans, pots and pans through there. So there's nothing that's cheap you're going to see coming up when it comes in. We bid a new serving line at Westminster Elementary, because their warming areas were not big enough, and they were having to go back and forth, back and forth. It's going to be more than that, so.
This is coming out of the food service line, that was not coming out of the general line.
We've also purchased.
It is a lot of money.
We've also purchased some additional chair, table, chair combos for, like, West Oak High needed some, and Rabinell needed some with their new addition, and Wahala needed a small number. So Scott Orr combined those in one order to get us the best price possible. But I'm telling you, there's nothing cheap these days, I assure you.
Particularly remember, in our last Sedexo contract, their guarantee was for a surplus of a hundred thousand dollars for us. So the purpose of that was so that we could maintain our equipment in the cafeterias.
Anybody see anything else you want to add?
Dishwasher got messed up. Okay. Next is the bond resolution. Yes, I did.
This is our annual borrowing, so that we can continue with our capital improvements. We are asking for not to exceed fourteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. We'll sell later in the month, and then we'll get the funds actually in March. So we're not asking you to approve it tonight, that'll be on next week's agenda, but we are confident that we'll still be within our 31 bills. We've talked to Christie across the street and to Brian, and we're in good shape for that.
Is that the same amount we got last March?
It's probably pretty close.
About the last year, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, and I actually, for the next, I projected the same amount based on prize numbers for the next several years, just to be consistent with it. It may fluctuate a little bit, there may be a premium on it depending upon how competitive it is. So that's, Brian projects it out for us, and that's been the consistent number for the last several years.
I was wondering if the assessed value goes up, though, our eight percent money would be bigger.
It should be, yes, but.
Whether we could do, he projects that.
Right, he projects it, so it changes. And he looks, he's got to look at the audit, but some things come off the books and then others come on, so when we give, move things around, property and that. But he's, he's sharp.
Question. Who's, this is your eight percent money, who's at the table when you're discussing the use of that eight percent money?
That would be myself, Ms. Moore, Mr. Alexander, and Scott Orr formed the eight percent committee.
Have we considered going with technology since it's, you know, such?
Well, I mean, they have, they have their dedicated meals to.
Well, no, no, I'm just talking about when Richard decides to, you know, y'all decide to do something in a building, chances are that building, that room that you're going to modify, whatever's going to require technology.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes. We all, once we lay out a plan for it.
I just don't want to be eleventh hour.
We involve, whomever it would be, once we lay out the plan for it. We do try to do the big projection of what needs to be done, like if it's a project, of course, like right now, we're working on Career Center, and that's going to take up the majority of the funding for the next couple of years. And then it's the Synical Middle School is what we've been, you know, tasked with and what we're already looking for, trying to start looking for property for. But we do bring them in there to the table to see. And like, for example, when West Oak and Wahala L, these last ones, they have gotten the new boards and things as part of it. In some areas, they've got new sound systems, they've got new overflow stuff at West Oak. So if there's a big crowd, you can overflow into the cafeteria, and you can have it on the big screen and have the sound in there, read it all the sound in the gym. So we try to make sure they're involved at an early enough stage that it doesn't cost us more than it should.
Right.
And it's also, as the board acts on a five-year building plan, it's included in there, and then those money included.
That's why we had to adjust it when we looked at it, well, we're repurposing the Career Center.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks. And what seems like is becoming a bad habit, but last year it was the eclipse. This year, it's Mr. Hamby not understanding that evidently every even year in November month, you have to be off Election Day. Not every, I knew every four years for the general election, but we got a memo, I guess they got several calendars proposed, because Pickens County looks just like ours. When I was talking with them on Thursday, she said, ooh, I better go check ours. She didn't even actually know yet. She said, I better go check ours, because we got the same thing. So anyway, what we had to do was make Tuesday, November the 6th, a holiday for students and staff. And the way we proposed that was to move the November 22nd in-service day to Monday the 5th. It didn't make sense for kids to come a day, then be off a day, and then come three days. And we've typically, when we look back at other calendars, done that in the past. So the November 22nd, excuse me, the October 22nd day that circled in red was a teacher development, professional development day. That would just become the 5th. And so those two days will trade out, as days students have to be there, and the 6th will be a holiday. And what that does is push school back to ending on the 31st, because we had to make up that day we missed for November the 6th. It pushes the nine weeks, the semester back to ending on the 11th, which is a Friday, which is kind of good, that we'd start fresh on Monday if we go the traditional forty, ninety days semester route. The negative, one makeup day is after graduation, and there's also a workday after graduation. But I'm telling you, with it happening, the third Monday in August being late, the 20th, 21st, like it has been, I'm sorry, I can't do any better, giving them spring break and Christmas and Thanksgiving and everything else that we asked for.
There's no movement on the state's part to.
Well, there's legislation there, there's a proposal, but they say, everybody I talk to that has any kind of inkling, and no one down there says, there's a couple of representatives from the coast that control that, and they're going to keep controlling.
We ought to have the option.
No, in fact, Pickens.
They don't want to start that early, that's fine.
When I was talking with Pickens, I was talking to Dr. Merk and Dr. Lackey, they had even asked about, did they possibly exclude the mountainous parts of the upstate? Because, you know, Upper O'Conne, Pickens, and Greenville tend to get more and that, so we could start earlier and do that, and they're not going to give you that waiver. The only waiver is for a modified year-round calendar, and so.
Which we have had parents ask us about in parent advisory, and we have developed a model that we're circulating, just because parents asked us if we would.
Yeah, all we did, it was at their request. We didn't, we didn't start it. And we gave them a normal one, a traditional one, too, so they can see both of them.
But we do have drafts of the 1920 calendars out, because it was requested of us, so we went ahead and developed them and had put some out there. So if you do hear that, we're not pushing it, but we just answered a request from parents.
So I'm going to need you all to just approve this change for us, so we can get it fixed on the.
You can put that on for next week.
On the, on the way up. And I apologize for that. I'll make sure that I know that every other year we're going to have. The one-to-one initiative is next. You know, we started that initiative with our ninth through 12th graders. As you know from our audit report, when Don talked to us back in December, he talked about with us being able to cut back on expenses, and our schools and district folks doing a nice job on that, plus receiving some revenue that we didn't expect from the state and local level. We had a 1.6 balance that could go into the fund balance. But, well, that, we talked about that and we worked with that. But then we also have heard from parent advisory, when are you going to finish the one-to-one? We got cut some technology funding from the state. Some of the options that Ms. Hopkins had with some of the funding that she had would not allow, you know, us to do that. So we met, we talked to the principals, and we said that for us to finish it out in grades three through 12, and quite honestly, we would be more than that, but that's what I can guarantee is three to 12. We will have devices at lower grades as well, but the one-to-one part would for sure be completed. We would ask that rather than we take that full 1.6 million dollars to the fund balance that we use, up to 600,000 of it, to purchase the, about 2,400 roughly additional Chromebooks we need to finish out the one-to-one with third through 12. And we did get hammered pretty hard at a parent advisory meeting about how were we going to do that, and would it be happening this time when they were meeting at West Oak High with us? So that would be our proposal. That could get us the 2,400 we need to finish that. We would continue, we'd fit the middle school, and then we'd continue to work backwards to the elementary, but this would give us the number that we need to finish three to 12.
Middle school principals really also expressed frustration about testing fatigue, and this would really help the testing scenario possibly even out this year if we could move on it.
Our fund balance would still be in good shape.
It will be above the required.
And the students really are using these. This isn't just something we want to do to say we're doing it. The kids are using the devices. I see it every night.
Yes.
I mean, when the kids come home to do homework now, they're opening their Chromebook.
And there's been remarkably, from what I heard, a small amount of damage to them.
Yes, sir.
Thinking, I wonder how many of them are going to get stolen.
That is correct. It's, you know, they see how much use they get, they take care of them, so we've been very pleased with that. So with your blessings, of course, you've got some time to ponder, and we can ask questions again, but I got the number from Mr. Shepherd and.
And if we approved that, now will they get them during this school year?
We would go ahead and get them as quickly as we could. Now, whether we could logistically get them checked out, everybody and that, that's a debate.
But the priority would be to get the middle schools covered for testing purposes before this spring. That would be our first focus.
Right.
Question, on the instructional side, are we also working towards getting our textbooks on, on the computers?
Yes. Whenever the state approves.
I'm having a hard time going to the barber shop, because the barber's saying their son is carrying a 70-pound book bag.
Yes, and we've talked about that at length as a board, but that is part of the issue. The middle school science textbook is a tech book now, it's a Discovery Ed tech book, and so right now, students really either access it at school, or if they are fortunate enough to have a device at home, the internet at home, then they can access it that way. We did purchase, with funds that we thought we were going to have and then didn't get, we did purchase Chromebooks for the science classes, so that students would have those access to the textbooks at school. As the state is adopting more and more textbooks, they are looking for more online opportunities, and as we make selections, we prioritize those, as long as they are well-aligned and suited for instruction.
Right, because right now, you're adding the computer to the backpack as well, so you're adding more weight to these little 100-pound students.
I can back up what the barber says, because my granddaughter brings her books home, and I can hardly pick them up.
Right.
And the problem is a lot of times, even though they're carrying all that weight, it doesn't necessarily have the content that they really need to have access to, and so the technology gives them more flexibility with the content.
Because the lockers are being pulled out as well.
Yes.
That I'm being told while I'm getting my haircut.
And it is where kids go, they go online for information and.
Got some shears, I'll just take.
That's what their preferred source of information is.
So our goal is to.
Yes, sir.
Make it all electronic. That'd be great.
Now you can get your hair cut.
Now I can get my hair cut. Thank you. I feel better already.
So that will be another one that we would ask for you to just sort of think about. If you have other questions that come up, you're free to always contact me, or you can contact Josh Shepherd, and we'll be happy to answer them for you.
One other question.
Sure.
If I may. Now, once we get 100% one-to-one, is there going to be some really solid funding to keep these babies up and running?
Well, the good thing about it.
Are we going to have a plan?
Right, we've got a plan.
An allocation?
We do, and he's got, there's a four-year rotation, and that'll be part of that money that we talked about, that capital fund, that half a million dollars that they get there. We divide some of it up among the schools, but we keep, you know, which started with you, we keep that 100,000 out for infrastructure and other things. Also, while I said the state took away the money, they cut it tremendously, but there still is some flowing in from the state. So yes, there is a plan in place for replacement. The devices, if taken care of, shouldn't have any problem lasting four years. So that's the way we're planning it out right now.
I just want to make certain our funding source is solid.
Right.
Tell you the truth, this is.
The funding, the solid one is our, is our eight percent.
Right, well, yes, that's where I was leaning.
The state one is, you know, not as solid. But we do have a plan in place to make sure we keep that up to speed, because we know that's going to be a, you know, constant problem.
It will be.
Okay, and it'll be here quick before, this group will be through and, you know, done with their four years before we really.
Exactly. I just want to make certain that.
Sure.
There's a continuing.
A legitimate question.
Thank you.
The one thing that I want you to help me with by not only looking at and listening to and hearing first reading on, but voting on tonight, is the school choice. Minor changes, minor, minor changes on the first part, on the policy, JFB, the second bullet on the first part, we now, that had a sort of a generic spring deadline. We talked with our principals on Wednesday, and what we've come up with is a sort of a hard-line deadline, because, you know, by June 30th, we feel like everybody in the district should, unless you move in new to our county, everybody in the district's had plenty of time. We start it, we're going to start it March 1st. So we go March first, so all of March, April, May, June, we put it on the radio, we put it on the website. They send a flyer home from the school if you're already school choice, that you gotta renew it. We got all kinds of options available for them to know. You do it online or you can even go to the school and we'll give you a piece of paper and help you do it there or we'll help you do it online. What we've had in the past that the schools have complained about is we've kinda set it ended on June first, but as people have flow, have been flowing into the offices for E V, if we've had room, we've kinda just said, ah, okay, it's after June first, we'll let you go. Well, the problem is they're making roles, they're assigning class rosters, they're doing things and every time we add some to it when we said we're not, we potentially disrupt that. It's one thing when somebody comes in from out of state to do that. They, they don't know. But our people who just wait to the last minute and they think it's gonna be okay and that, we're gonna try to, to nix that. So, uh, we talked with the schools and we voted, all the principals voted and we had to vote twice and we decided that June thirtieth would be the cutoff date. And after June thirtieth, unless you move to our county then, or let's say that Dr. Thorson has his kids registered at, at Waha La Middle and he moves to the Seneca. If he wanted to leave them there, he could do a school choice because they're already enrolled there. Okay? It's just new people who get their teacher's assignment and decide, I don't like that teacher, so now I wanna go do a school choice. That's what happens in July and August. Or I wanna go play football somewhere else because it's almost time for football to start and that's what happens in middle of July. So our goal is to do a school choice and give them that option, but to do it in a timely manner.
Steve, I think it's a good idea, but since in the past they have been allowed to slip in, you know, they get that in mind, but we'll be able to do this, so, so to get that word out.
Oh, we will, we'll go on the radios, the newspapers.
Nice question.
Sure. Now, I fully understand that. So there's only one change other than the date on the actual policy. And then there's a couple of changes on the form which we'll put online, um, and they can complete it. It's just helping us clean up our paperwork a little bit, but you'll see we added school student currently attends because as principals are checking their grades and their academic stuff, uh, their behavior and all those, it helps if they know because they don't necessarily come from a feeder school in your area. And then we changed the deadline at the, uh, bottom, which is changed in red. And we marked out to make three copies because that was for when we were doing it by hand at the school and they were sending a copy here and a copy to the, to the family. So. Really, logistically, all we did was change the ending date. We're gonna stick to it, uh, more than we have and then we, um, asked for what school they currently attend.
There's a question. All right. Anything else?
Wow, I think I'm good.
You're good. All right, Ms. Hopkins.
I have with me this evening Dr. Bright and Mrs. Douglas and they have prepared a proposal that was to share with the leadership team, which the leadership team supports, um, but we would like to also make sure that you have some visibility into it regarding ex- expanding our PIP program.
Okay.
So while they're pulling that up, I will just go ahead and get started. In, um, looking at PIP numbers and the need for our children over the past several years, we've really noticed a, a increased need in, um, what the students, I mean, just their individual needs, but also in an additional full-day program. And so that is our proposal is we are, um, proposing to add a couple of full-day programs outside of what are traditional programs that are already in place. So I think.
I'm not sure what happened.
It was just downloaded, so I don't know what happened. It wasn't bottom.
Oh, I can log into Canvas here and pull that up.
Technical difficulties.
Does, does the PIP start at three, age three?
PIP is for children age three and four. Um, they are actually, they can be placed into PIP on their third birthday. And so it's very hard to project numbers because it's ever-changing as, um, I get referrals from Baby Net or just as they come through Child Find. So, um, it, you know, we have projected numbers, but again, you know, they, they change all the time. Um, so, um, so right, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I wanna thank Ms. Douglas and Dr. Bright for preparing this. The reality of it was that some of our students who are our neediest students that qualify for PIP, they were not given the option of a full-day program when they were four years old. When we had other students who were not as needy, who were qualifying for 4K and, and a student who needed more help was still only getting the two hours, two and a half hours a day. And it just didn't make sense that why our most needy students were not being served.
Right, we, right, it, um.
And they've answered that call and come up with a plan that we think can, can address a lot of those needs.
So, so traditionally we have a morning PIP program and afternoon PIP program. Two hours, it, you know, the mornings is two hours, afternoon is two hours. And, um, we have them at seven different schools, classes, but we have seven and a half classes and we'll, it's kinda all in the, um, in the PowerPoint, but for one reason that we really wanna do this, like Dr. Thorson said, is to better prepare our PIP children to be able to go into regular kindergarten with just resource support. Because right now we're seeing a lot of them feed into self-contained special ed that maybe had they had an opportunity for that full-day class prior to the kindergarten year, they could potentially be successful. Um, so, gotta look.
Can't drive it, Andy.
So, um.
Now, and the three-year-old classes are halftime?
Well.
All of them are?
Yeah, the, the three and four-year-old PIP and we, right now, it used to be years past, sorry, I keep on crunching. Years past, we would have the three-year-olds in the morning and the four-year-olds in the afternoon. But, um, in the past two or three years, we have found that it's really better to serve the children that are like their needs. So it's mixed three and four-year-olds in the morning and mixed three and four-year-olds in the afternoon. And the teachers help make those decisions with the school psych and, you know, as those children go through the evaluation period, so we're good.
We're good.
Okay. All right, so what we're, our goal is to decrease those numbers in self-contained classes when they enter kindergarten. Um, and so based on the most recent, recent child count data, sixty-two percent of the preschool children, those that are three and four, um, with disabilities, um, are served through the PIP program. And so we really, you know, we don't wanna continue to funnel them into potentially the self-contained classrooms and so this is the proposal to try to enter that, um, the full day. So you wanna pull it up?
I think that. So just wanted to share a little bit of data with you. Um, over the past ten years, our need for preschool intervention programs has either remained the same or it's increased. So if you look at the school year two thousand seven, two thousand eight, our annual count for special education was one thousand seven hundred and forty-three students and at that time we had four full, um, FTEs for preschool intervention programs and those were the traditional model A M P M. Now, out of that fourteen, or seventeen hundred and forty-three, three point nine percent of those kids were either three or four-year-olds, okay? So now we fast forward ten years and we're looking at twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, our count is now one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine. We have two hundred and twenty-six more kids this year than we had ten years ago at our annual count and we have seven point five FTEs for PIP. But what's interesting is that the percentage for three and four-year-olds jumped up from three point nine percent to six point two percent. So now we've got not only more special ed kids, but a greater percentage of those kids are preschoolers. You know, we're doing a really great job with Child Find, so.
I stay very busy.
Oh, yes.
And that is a, that is a mandate that we, we can't sit back and say, bring your students to us. It's our obligation to go out and find special needs three-year-olds so that we can serve them, correct?
Yes, that is true. In fact, um, we start evaluating, let's see, ninety days before their third birthday. And that way, if they're eligible, they start on their third birthday with an IEP and, um, that's part of IDEA.
But your first slide says we were ser- serving sixty-three percent of the three and four-year-olds that needed.
Yes.
Sixty-something, but.
Sixty-two.
So where are the others that we're not serving? They just choose not to come?
Self-contained class? Yeah, no, they may be in, um, your 4K programs.
They could be in 4K resources.
They didn't find them.
Yeah, they're not self-contained. They're in 4K classes, which are all-day classes for, you know, gen ed, um, for kids with IEPs. But they're not self-contained. They just may get a forty-five-minute block of resource support.
Or they may be getting just speech services.
So they are getting some service.
Yeah.
But some parents also decline services.
Right.
So there, that would be a, a percentage as well.
Yeah. So just, so where I find these children is through Baby Net, which is, is a mandated program for children age birth to age three. And then at two points, when they're two and a half years old, they, I start those transition meetings to start serving them when they're three. Then I meet with those families and they, but then also anyone can refer to me for Child Find. Pediatricians, daycare workers, neighbors, parents, whoever. Um, and so far this year, I think I've had right around a hundred Child Find referrals. I mean, it, it's just amazing. Um, and not all of them qualify, but there's a lot of kids out there that are extremely needy.
You get information out through churches or daycares?
I do. I send mailer, I send a mailing out every year, send it out to pediatricians, churches, daycares, um, I mean, just as much as I can.
And also utility companies are good about allowing us to add, uh, a note on bills and things like that. We, we restaurants.
I've worked hard to try to just really establish a relationship with the community so that they better understand what we do and I think it's paying off.
And, and something that I think may also be contributing to this is that our NICUs are doing a really good job of keeping babies alive that are born weighing less than a pound. And it's incredible, um, how, you know, they're able to, you know, meet the needs of these infants, but oftentimes they also have additional needs. They may, um, come through NICU and get to go home, but there's oftentimes they're, you know, they have a need for speech therapy or some other special education down the road, so. But yeah, we are doing a, a really good job, um, finding that population. I wanted to share, um, this slide about the trends for the primary disability. So the majority of these kids are identified as developmentally delayed and then speech and autism are running neck and neck for the, the second, um, disability category and that's their primary disability that's on their IEP. But what's even more interesting is when we get to these slides showing, um, our identification rate over time. So like, these are the numbers for kids identified as DD starting in two thousand and we had single digits in two thousand two and two thousand three and now we are at a whopping two hundred and thirty-six kids identified as developmentally delayed um, for our most recent child count. That is just extraordinary, um, to me. But, um, the next slide is also, um, very eye-opening and looking at the number of kids identified with autism. So back in two thousand, you know, we were in the single digits, um, five, two thousand, two thousand one. We're at a hundred and thirty-six for our most recent child count.
And that, that matches national statistics, right?
Absolutely.
So part of this is just, um, there, there's more doctors and I guess other professionals are diagnosing this.
Two hundred and ninety-one.
They're being identified, right.
Yeah.
So it, it, it might not necessarily mean that there are more autistic students. It's just that there's a diagnosis that's more commonly used now.
Yeah, and we don't do all of the diagnoses. Sometimes students come to us with reports from Greenville Developmental Peds or other offices where they're diagnosed before they even come and they're bringing a psychoeducational evaluation report in their hand that our school psychologists use to identify for educational purposes.
And a lot of the develop, I wouldn't say a lot, some of the, the students that are identified as developmental delay, school psychs and the whole Child Find team that evaluates them, they'll choose to go developmental delay over autism diagnosis because the parents are so reluctant. It's just a scary word and they're just really worried about that. And so we feel like, um, if we can just serve those children, get them in school and serve them under that DD umbrella, we can worry about autism later. You know, right now, we're just really wanting to work on that early intervention to get them in so that we can start some of the therapies that are needed, but.
Is any research that ties the increase in numbers to drug use?
For autism?
It's a lot more prevalent, but there's.
No. They, they're unable to find the single cause factor for autism. I mean, there's suspicions.
Not just autism, but the whole delay.
But for the whole thing, yeah, there is. I mean, there's some correlation, yeah.
Is there a prenatal care situation that we're staring at that we haven't addressed yet or? In other words, these children have, are not receiving, the, you know, the, the parents are not receiving the prenatal?
You know, maybe for some, uh, uh, but I, I don't know that it's that great of a impact.
It's not a fact, may not be a factor.
You know, and I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't be able to give you numbers on that. I know I'm also on the First Steps Board, um, for O'Conne County, you know, and that's the kinda thing that they work a lot on is some of that early care and, um, I will tell you, I went to a training recently and, um, it was for the early learning standards and one of the things that we had to do like a-ha's from those early learning standards and this is a group of educators, daycares, you know, school districts, whatever. And one of the a-ha's for several of them was that they didn't know prenatal care impacted student achievement or, you know, as the children, and I was just like, wow, I mean, because it really does. It just, I mean, it surprised me, but.
How about environmental? Are we looking at, or do you see any pockets where these are like, there's clusters of these young individuals?
I think, um.
Have you seen anything like that?
I see more of that in my 4K students than maybe in my special ed students and my Child Find kids. You know, the pocket of where the need is.
And then we have just, uh, one more data slide. This is looking at our students identified as speech language impaired as the primary disability. Um, those numbers are pretty consistent over time, but what these numbers don't include are the number of kids that are getting speech secondary to their autism and developmental delay. Because a lot of kids with autism and developmental delay also get speech. But these are numbers for just the primary speech only as being the disability. So, um, I'm gonna let Ann talk about the enrollment data.
Okay, so if you look at this slide, you can see that the enrollment, enrollment data from, um, each year from day forty-five to day one eighty does increase. If you look at this year alone, um, from day forty-five, we had eighty-one students in PIP. We're already at ninety-eight as of today. Um, and we have thirty-plus children waiting to be evaluated that are kinda on the, here we come, you know, on my radar through Baby Net and Child Find. And so with that number, you know that, you know, our day one eighty is gonna go up. I mean, it's climbed every year to any plus students and it's just, it's continuing on that track.
And again, these would, these would be students whose birthdays happen between now and the end of the school year. So we're projecting their third birthday, so they're testing them and, and qualifying them shortly before their third birthday so that when they turn three, they're in our program.
And some of them are already three, maybe even a young four, just because they came through Child Find versus Baby Net, but, but yeah, I mean, it's, they're coming.
How long does that ta- that testing take place to identify that child?
It depends.
So, um.
Does it vary depending upon the child?
Well.
You know, the handicap?
Yes, but we're limited, so, um, a, a child is referred to Child Find, whether it's Baby Net or whatever. And then I will schedule a screening if it's Child Find and they come to me to be screened, myself and a speech therapist screen them. And then we determine the need to go on for a full evaluation or not based on the outcome of that screening. And then I set up the evaluation and the parent comes back and the school psych, speech, OTPT, whoever is needed for that child comes to that. And then from that point, they have the ninety days.
We have sixty days.
Sixty days, I'm sorry, to complete that whole process to up having the meeting with the parent.
Well, we have sixty days to evaluate, sixty calendar days, and then we have fifteen business days to conduct an eligibility determination and then another thirty calendar days to write the IEP, but, um, at, at the beginning of the year.
Now we're doing a hundred and twenty-some days, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, now, our teams do their very best to not only test, but to also do. Yeah. I mean, now, our teams do their very best to not only test, but to also do the eligibility determination and have the IEP written by that sixty-day timeline so that we're not adding another forty-five days before they're able to get services. IDEA gives us another forty-five days, but we don't want to take that long because we're just prolonging services to kids who really need them.
And especially if that third birthday is there, just, you know, a month away, then they, you know, they got to get it done.
Right.
Everything's pushed by that third birthday for children that, that I know about prior to the third birthday.
Unfortunately, we are short a school psychologist, which means our team is working harder. So that's an area of recruitment that I've really been working hard on. And I'm happy to say that for next year, we've got three new school psych interns to come on. And by this time last year, I had not filled those vacancies. I didn't get signatures probably until like April. And we're already locked in for next year. So to me, that's a celebration and that I'm looking at a staff, unless somebody surprises me in April when they get their contract and they haven't told me about it yet, so.
So currently, right now, you'll see that in Seneca, we have a PIP class at each of the three elementary schools. In Wahala area, we have one at James and Brown, but at Wahala Elementary, because we feed to most of the kids and Kiwi kids to Wahala for PIP. So we have one and a half classes there. And then in Westminster area, there's one at Fair Oak and one at Orchard Park currently. That's our current numbers. And each PIP class also has an assistant with them.
Again, that means an, an afternoon program and a morning program.
Yes.
Yeah, usually three-year-olds come in the morning and four-year-olds come in the afternoon, but that's not always the case. Sometimes they cross over.
Yeah. So these were current numbers as of early January, when we were first getting ready to present to the leadership team. So you can see class size anywhere from, or, or total program size anywhere from six to twenty. I can tell you at Fair Oak, where that teacher only has those six children, she also serves some resource in 4K. And so she's still very busy. But then you can see those were the evaluations. The, for our right-hand column, is the number of evaluations that I have kind of in the wings that will be done, that I know of right now. You know, or, so.
So how many can they serve at the time?
Well, it depends on the level of need by the children.
I thought about eight was enough.
And it depends on the size of the classroom too, because we do have one PIP classroom that is a good size, smaller than the other ones. I would max that classroom at about eight kids, where others can serve, I'd say, maybe ten comfortably.
It does depend on the level of need of the children. Sometimes we have to request additional adult support to, to support some of those extremely needy children, ones that are medically fragile or.
Bathroom trained.
Yes.
Maybe it does not limit class size. IDEA does not limit the count, the child count for PIP programs like it does for all the other programs. So what they're talking about is we've put together a model that is our point of view, and it's a weighted model based on the, the various needs of the children so that we can manage the staffing. And then we, of course, have to take into consideration the room size and, and how many kids you can handle. But our PIP teachers are doing an amazing job with extremely challenging children. And, and I do agree with Dr. Thorson that there are, that it's likely that we are identifying students that we didn't identify before. But I think also, our teachers that are sitting here will tell you that they are having much more challenging situations in their classroom than they had five or ten years ago. And so, so the needs are changing, and there's no doubt about that.
Yeah, we're getting three-year-olds who kick, spit, bite, hit, climb furniture. The population is different.
Elop regularly.
We have, our weighting is, which odd in class, are they potty training, toileting issues? Are they elopement and behavioral? Do they have elopement or behavioral issues? Are they medically fragile? I think that's all of them.
Communication skills.
Communication, because many of them are non-verbal. So it's.
Or non-ambulatory. You know, we're getting more students that are coming to us with that medical fragile state where they may be in a wheelchair when they come to us. So, yeah, that, that is how we determine how many can be served in a class, you know, is by looking at the needs.
And then they have the seizures and they have, you know, just feeding tubes and.
How many classes are we talking about adding if we go to the?
Oh, we're getting ready to segue.
We're so excited you asked.
Yeah, I knew that.
You read our minds. So this is our proposal for next school year due to the, not only the high projected number, but also because the increased level of need. This is especially in the Seneca and Wahala areas. We would like to increase from seven point five FTEs to ten positions, so adding two point five. But really, because of our numbers, we would, we'd probably already have to add a point five to a one point oh, even if we didn't go to a full-day program. We would still be looking at an eight or an eight point five. But what this would allow for is to have two full-day transitional PIP programs, one in the Seneca area, one in the Wahala area. And then we would also add a PIP program to Kiwi Elementary. They don't have one currently. So this is a snapshot of what it would look like. In the Seneca area, we would have our traditional AMPM models at Blue Ridge, Northside, and Ravenel. And then we would have a full-day PIP class that we are talking about possibly being housed at Blue Ridge Elementary. It's under discussion. And then for Wahala, we would still have the same model at James and Brown. Wahala Elementary has one point five FTEs right now. We would take that point five FT, move it to Kiwi, and add another point five to that. So that would be that new program. And then we would have a full-day PIP in the Wahala area. We're talking about Wahala Elementary as a possible location for that program. No changes in the Westminster area right now. This really surprised us because, you know, Ann and I wanted to get feedback. Ann talked to the PIP teachers that we currently have to see what, you know, who would be considered for a full-day program? What's the projected number if we did have it? We only had two names turned in in the Westminster area. There just wasn't enough support to have a program in that area based on the, you know, what was given to us. But that's not to say that we, you know, wouldn't need it in the future. But just looking at the current projected numbers right now, there wasn't a need to add a point five in that area either. The, the Westminster area would basically stay the same.
And the team has consulted with the teachers in all the programs. And also, I'm pleased to report that we have teachers that, that are wanting to teach a full-day PIP program too, and would be anxious to be in there.
Can you, I, I'm going to ask you to dumb some things down for me. So you're saying a PIP teacher has how many students in a class, maybe?
Like in a half-day class?
Half-day, because that's all you have right now, AM or PM.
Right. I would say anywhere from three to, I think, one has fifteen.
And, and do any of these children come in with an aide? They, they don't have aides, do they?
Some, some have, some medically fragile.
Okay, so, so we have a possible aides in that classroom. I'm trying to compare it to the old Title I days where you got a teacher and an aide and you, you got ratios and teacher gets X amount of students, an aide, add an aide to it, you get Y number. Okay, so. I guess, the money, where's the money? Is the, is it a federal or is it our, in other words, local, the PIP side?
This, when, when we looked at it, this is where we, we actually, you know, we've said all along, we've been a little bit overstaffed at the high school level, and they've had academic assistance positions, which are basically just free, freebies for them to do with what they want. And there were three, we got them down to three, one per school. We had told them last year to prepare to be without them this year. And so when we talked about it a little bit, that's what we said. We would take those, basically trade those three out for these two and a half plus the aides that go in there so that we're not having a big hit on the budget.
Because I'm not really worrying, I, I see an awful lot of work that these teachers are having to do. And I just want to make certain you're, you're getting what you need, because I'm hoping if we can take care of them at the earlier age, may resolve an issue or two later on.
Yes.
Well, that's why we, we committed that to.
And, and I agree with.
And that's also why we set up the weighting of students.
Right.
Because if there's one class that has a, once everything is tallied as far as the weighting of each student, if it's reaching like twenty-one or higher, then we kind of look at, do we need to add an additional?
Additional support.
In that.
And, and there's a process that, that Ms. Hopkins set up for the teacher, the administrator to go online and fill out a form. And we get them in management team for additional educational support. And we look at all the options and then we decide. There, we put several, I don't know how many we've had, we put several in PIP and special needs classes throughout the year.
We just did one today.
Yeah, we just actually approved one today, that's right. And so we continue to add to them as their needs have grown.
Right, because I don't want your hands be, feel like you're being tied because of the numbers you're, we're staring at right now.
And these are, those numbers are predicted for, for like the start of school through the end of August.
Yeah.
And then I have a whole other round of numbers even when we start looking at September and on further.
And another point, just the financial point, unless we deviated from the way we've previously done it, you wouldn't approve this change. This would be approved in the budget process because this is part of the, the school allocations that Mr. Hamby and Ms. Williams do with principals each year. And, but we wanted you to be aware because we had a need and just thought it'd be good for you to learn a little bit about the PIP program.
I, I have no problems. I appreciate everything you've done. It's quite admirable.
We appreciate your support.
Ann, please explain to me again, if you will, why the Westminster area doesn't need another one?
Well, so Marge had gone and met with each of the PIP teachers, and I had as well. And when they were projecting for next year placement of students, they had two students that, only two that they were projecting could possibly benefit from this all-day program. But then when I looked at those names of those children, they're actually Blue Ridge children that we're having to bus to Wahala this, I mean, to Fair Oak this year, because Blue Ridge numbers are so high that I just can't place any more children in that classroom. I mean, we're having them.
So what I'm hearing you say, there's not, just not that many of those students in the Westminster, Fair Oak area.
The ones that would benefit from the, from the transition PIP class. The children in Fair Oak and Orchard Park are a little more needy. And so chances of them even going regular ed kindergarten at this point is, you know, we just can't, the teachers aren't able to make that call right now.
Part of what they ask the teachers is whether or not the student is able to sustain an entire day, because that's part of the challenge. You know, it's whether or not they can actually do a full day of school. But for those that can, it's a big jump from a two and a half hour program to a full day of kindergarten. And so we're really trying to find that sweet spot of students, you know, that have that need. Our hope, and you know, and this was our first ask, but our hope is that we can build out a greater continuum of services and more flexibility in the program so that as students are able to benefit from more and more of the instructional day, that we can do, do that for them. So this is, as we've talked about it, this is the first ask of what I hope will be many, is we really try to build out that continuum of support for our students.
But this was not a budget reason for not having one in the Westminster area. We fully went into this thinking it would be three new FTEs.
Yes.
But we don't want to create a program if we're not going to have students in it.
And, and you may want to talk about your efforts for, for the Child Find, has been as aggressive as it has been in Seneca and Wahala area as far as getting the word out.
As far as being able to contact, well.
Recruit all three areas.
Yes, yes.
Radio.
Well, and, yeah.
Newspaper.
Well, and I, I mean, I advertise, I guess advertise is the right word, or inform. Like I say, I send the word through a mailing that goes to pediatricians. There are none in Westminster. I mean, so all those students come in the Seneca area, daycares, churches, newspaper, I believe it gets pushed out that way.
And our schools work really hard too.
The schools push it out. And it's, you know, I, I push it out every way I know how to.
We get parents also, I mean, spread the word.
Yes, I do. Some pediatricians are better at referring children than others, which, that's okay. You know, it's just, it's word of mouth. I try to, through first steps.
What I'm hearing, the bottom line is, the kids may be there, we just haven't found them.
If the parents brought them, we, if, it may, that may be right, that we've advertised. And sometimes families just aren't ready for their kids to start school yet. And they will keep them at home until they need to bring them for kindergarten and be identifying them.
Yeah, but it's not through lack of effort. I mean, they're, they're recruiting all three areas the same way and.
It's, yeah, I mean, I have, yeah.
I'm not questioning the effort, I'm just questioning.
And if, if families do come, we're going to add a program in the Westminster area as needed. This is not something where we would, oh, there's not a program there, you can't attend. If, if we have a need, if Fair Oak or Orchard Park got to where their programs were too big, we'd add another program if we needed to.
We've had to do that mid-year in the past, but.
And Westminster Elementary kids feed into Orchard Park. So I know y'all may have been thinking, where are those children?
What does the full day look like? I mean, what hours is it? I know you said half-days are like two. What is the full day going to be for these students?
It would be a normal school day, you know, seven forty-five to two thirty or, you know, whatever. But also in the hopes of that is we're being able to not only work with the children with their needs, but we're also be able to teach them just the dynamics of a whole school day, how to transition in the hallway, how to go to lunch and manipulate a lunch tray, how to go to the big gang bathrooms in the hall versus maybe in the classroom. I mean, there's more to that school day than I think we really think about. And for those little guys, just the, the hurdle is huge, more so than your general population.
I know Marge mentioned speech needs, so just of language immersion.
Yes, yes.
Important vocabulary building.
Because, yeah, I have a three-year-old grandson, and the last time we hung out together, we slept for a couple hours in the afternoon. So you're dealing with all of that as well, right?
They would probably, yes, they would have a quiet time, which could end up being nap or could just be quiet. Some children really don't sleep much, we are finding with some of these special needs children for different reasons. But then they would have that opportunity, just like they do in the 4K programs. There is a quiet time, you know.
And we do, again, we said it tonight, but just to reiterate, we do serve many of our special education preschoolers in the 4K program. So if they can function, you know, with that program, we, we do that now.
That's kind of our first, we want to do that first. If we think they can go to 4K and be successful, then if, you know, if they meet the eligibility requirements, then that's what we do. But some of them might not quite be ready for the 4K. They still need that smaller setting, but they need to be working on getting the old, the whole day down.
Or they may not meet the requirements.
Or might not meet the requirements of the eligibility for 4K.
When you say it's third, three, three-year-old and four-year-old, but they don't start until, you, you can't evaluate until they're three, right?
Two and a half.
Two and a half is when we start.
Two and a half, oh, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Can't start for their thir, their third birthday.
They can't start the actual program until the third birthday.
They start school on their third birthday if they're eligible.
That's why PIP is the hardest to project for the next year, because we have no idea how many referrals we'll get over the summer. And, you know, we're, other, you know, testing, you know, kind of stops over the summer. In the most of the cases for the non, you know, preschool population, there's testing going on all summer long for, for preschool.
I'm still screening. I'd love to have y'all come join me sometime.
I've got 4K screening coming up, a hundred fifty-four kids.
It'll be a fun opportunity. Yes, I do.
Sign up for 4K screening on the twenty-third if you want to go see that.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is that it?
Okay, yes, sir.
That's it. All right, Ms. Williams.
Okay, I, I actually don't have an exhibit. What I want to do is just update you with the exhibit that I shared back in the fall on recruitment and retention. As you know, that's a, that's a process that's ongoing. As you know, that's a, that's a process, it's ongoing. One of the, the critical things this year that we're facing is, of course, the teacher shortage and then the, the cap for employees. And I think that there's been a little confusion as to Terry and, and where that 10,000 cap falls. While we do have employees under Terry, which is about 40 employees this year that would exit through the Terry program, there are individual teachers that may retire this year that will be subject to the cap, even if they did not Terry. So that has been a little bit of confusion. Some folks will say, well, I didn't Terry. Well, even if you didn't Terry, if you retired after January 1st, 2013, you will be subject to the cap. So that's where it's gonna be critical. And we have, as HR folks across the state have talked with, with legislature about that, and I'm sure Dr. Thorson has done that as well. There is a waiver that we can get signed saying that we don't have enough candidates and we've not been able to find a certified person. And we could get that waiver signed, but there, there are stipulations with that. The other thing that's kinda come up in the pictures, just so you know, over the past few years, when I gave you that about the new, new hires, over the past three years, we've hired 23 to 25 retirees. And those are some folks that may not be subject to the cap. However, they're retired and they're aging out. Do they still wanna come back and work for us? May or may not. So that's gonna be a critical issue in that, when I shared with you in the fall, that we had over 4,000 teachers to leave the teaching profession in South Carolina, and we only had about 1,800 graduates. So you don't see as many folks at job fairs. One of the things that we've done, just to kinda give you a list, in, in the fall and October, we went to Anderson University. From that job fair, we were able to find special ed candidates. We have since given at least three early contracts to special ed teachers that were graduating in December or are scheduled to graduate in the spring, because that, that was an area where we fell short. We started the year with probably about four vacancies in special ed. And so we've been very active in, in making sure that we're getting those folks in early this year and giving them contracts, making a commitment. We've also offered three early contracts in, in critical needs such as math and science. As those vacancies became available, or knowing that we had those available. We did send out the letters of intent in December, so we did get, get just a general idea. While some folks were may not ready to commit and say, I'm gonna not return next year, because we did ask that they submit a letter of resignation, so we kinda know and have a feel of what's, what's out there. Steve and I did do staffing meetings along with Gloria last week, and we finished up today, meeting with principals, talking about the various cuts at their schools. So we do have an idea who may be displaced and vacancies that they may know of that haven't been submitted to Human Resources yet. Of course, you know, contracts are not due back now. That April 15th deadline and April 25th is no longer on the table. So it's May 10th that they have to give us whether or not they know that, will they have to commit, sign their contract. So in the meantime, we're, we're being aggressive in attending job fairs, assessing our needs, talking with employees. We do plan to go and meet with all of the displaced employees, at-will employees, get an idea who can come back and help us, especially in special ed. That's definitely some critical needs there. We had a job fair Saturday at TL Hannah. It was called the South Carolina Outreach Program for the upstate, where it was Anderson districts 1 through 5, Rainbow, Pickens, and Aponee. We had representatives there. We had about 40 people to come through there. These included people that were looking at alternative certifications. So we are reaching out to make sure that anybody with a four-year degree who was interested in becoming certified, letting them know that there are options out there. And we've had a lot of great success with that. Folks that have worked through the PACE program, folks that have gone through ABCTE, which is the American Board for Certification of Teacher Excellence. So there are lots of alternative methods out there that we're trying to get the word out. Marge has actually done a great job in helping with speech. That's been a revolving door a little bit. She's actually scheduled this week to go to Myrtle Beach to the South Carolina Speech and Hearing Association Conference for us. We have, this month will be a busy, busy month. We have Winter where we'll be going next week. We have Swool, Southern Westland, which is right here in our backyard. We're going there and Anderson University. So there are some job fairs, but we have to be quick and aggressive in, in making sure we, we talk to folks. And of course, making sure we check them out. We just don't wanna grab someone just to be grabbing them. But we definitely wanna make sure that we're front and center in getting the best candidates. As I said in the past, over the, the trend for the past few years has been close to 95 or 100 teachers. So with all of those affected with the Terry and just with that cap, we're looking at about 40 additional positions. So in addition to what we normally had, it'll probably be close to 150 teachers, which is a big, a big, bigger than what we faced before. And so that's why, as I make my exit, I definitely wanna be very passionate about making sure that students have great teachers in the classroom. So that is something that I will continue to be dedicated with in supporting principals and making sure that we get them early on board. Actually, we had a math candidate that came in last week, and I quickly introduced him to Dr. Thorson. They kinda reminded me of each other with their passion for math teaching, and he quickly took them to a school so they can meet the principal as well, so. And then again, the, the next thing would be focusing on retention. How do we support our teachers? Making sure we, we're making life easy for the teachers out here. I see some familiar faces from Blue Ridge. They worked with me as a teacher and a principal in the past, and I think they, they can vouch for me being passionate about the classroom and supporting teachers, because that's really where the goal of achievement starts. We support the teachers, we be in there, we guide them, we coach them if there, there are situations we can deal with. And then they're gonna do what they do every day best as a, as an educator and teach our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, well, then we have a couple of action ideas. Well, we can do it all in one motion for the policies that you just talked about.
We'd like, or I'd like you to help us out by going ahead and, first reading, JFB policy about school choice. And really, we, we're just putting a ending date of it of June 30th, and we changed forms to application on the policy part. And then we updated the application that's online. Folks can access it online or come into a school. And if they don't wanna do it online, they will give them a, a paper copy and then we'll input it for them. But we added the school that they attended, and we cleaned up the language at the bottom. With again emphasizing the date, that the 30th is the, the deadline. And as Mr. Hamby talked about, we will make sure that we have gone above and beyond to communicate that. And we will start that process in March, and we will continue it. We do a one-call when we start it, we do a one-call before we end it, we do radio blasts, we do Facebook, we do Twitter, we do all our websites. So we'll get with Greg and the paper and Dick and those guys and make sure that we do everything within humanly possible to get the word out there. You know what? Somebody will still miss it, but we're gonna do our best to get it out there.
Sure will, all right. We have a motion, first reading, to approve policy JFB and JFB-E1.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve policy JFB school policy on first reading and JFBE1 school policy, pardon me, school choice application first reading.
Motion to second, any other discussion questions? You know, all in favor? That is unanimous. And then we need an executive session, so if we could have a motion to go into executive session for employment recommendations and changes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into executive session for employment recommendations and changes.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank y'all for being with us.